Good evening, everyone. This is the meeting to order for the Champaign Area School Board, Board of Directors. I'm commending the whole meeting for Tuesday, October 14th. Please drive and join me in the 18th.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just immediately prior to this evening's meeting, the board did meet an executive session to discuss real estate and personnel matters. Item 3.01 Superintendent's Report, Mr. Bigger.
Thank you, Mr. Norcross. A few items tonight. Do want to congratulate Mike for the Trojan Walk win. Good job representing the board and congratulations.
I don't think I was, but Buzz Lightyear won.
Yeah, well, you won the fundraising part, right? Yes. On Monday, we're gonna, I'm gonna start my podcast series, so I'm gonna start interviewing key individuals throughout the district to get our podcast out there. We call the Education Exchange, so look for that out on Spotify, Apple, and also our social media sites. Hope to produce those next week and maybe have them out the following week. So it'll be topics like the new dean of students. I'm gonna interview one of them and see how it's going, how it's helping a building. We'll talk about reading and interventions and just go through all the topics we're talking about as a school board. The staff presentations are going well. I think I'm about halfway through the staff presentations of updating all the employees in the buildings to the best of my ability and getting some good feedback so far and also lots of questions. The newsletter did go out digitally last week and also we sent a postcard. And we are tracking how people are opening the newsletter, whether they scan the QR code and/or have opened it on their email, just to track, you know, how people are consuming the newsletter. Wouldn't be another meeting if I didn't say we don't have a state budget yet. And I'm thankful we're Chambersburg, so we can certainly absorb some of these challenges. But many of my colleagues and the nonprofits are really starting to suffer financially. So we hope there's a state budget real soon. And on the heels of the state budget, you know, we're future looking into the federal budget. You know, we've heard of cuts of Title II, III, and IV potentially, you know, which is about 750,000. And then Title I is about 2.3 or 2.4 million, maybe a little bit more. So we haven't heard anything about cuts with Title I, but we have heard of cuts on those other ones. So let's hope our state and federal supporters get their act together here sooner than later and at least let us know what the rules of the game are. Last item is the end of the first marking period. It's next Friday already. My, how time flies. So congratulations to all these, everybody who made it through the first marking period and continues to do well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bigger. This evening, I'm gonna deviate from my norm a little bit. I make it a habit and I will continue to do it, to talk about our schools of distinction by 2030, the community investment. And I spend a lot of time talking about the bricks and mortar component of that and the finance component of that, which are the two obvious parts. But just don't want to let anything else fall through the cracks or make it seem to anyone in the public of what all is going on in district. There are other components to this. There are grade level realignments, not just the K through three and the four, five, six. There's some ninth, you know, some high school changes. And then there's the elementary redistricting. It's all part of the schools of distinction by 2030. You don't build new buildings and gather some synergies by consolidating your resources without having to do other steps in the process too. So just want to bring that, again, keep that to the forefront, keep it out to the community, try to be as transparent as possible. Everyone will be seeing more of that in months to come, in addition to the normal finance and bricks and mortar discussion. The stuff that's bricks and mortar is what everyone likes to see. The other stuff maybe not so fun, but it's necessary and all part of the schools of distinction by 2030 and the investment of the community. So that's why I will continue to talk about it. And my detractors can say I'm being negative, but it's just for information purposes only. Thank you. 4.01 Summary of Action Plan Results. It's like Mr. Widman's gonna get us started and then we will turn it over to our new directors.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I'm Kurt Widman, Assistant Superintendent. And for those joining us online, welcome. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing the three directors of our divisions. They're here to share their top strategic priorities that will drive progress across our schools this year. As planned, these directors are spending roughly 70% of their time directly in our school buildings actively supporting staff. My own role has shifted dramatically since they came on board. For the last four years, I felt like a fireman. My day was spent reacting to emergencies with the phone ringing off the hook with urgent calls from principals and parents. I was constantly dousing fires. Now with our directors deployed across the district, they are building capacity among our building staff and following through with initiatives and strategies. My own focus has shifted from reactive problem solving to proactive strategy and innovation. I now spend about 70% of my time working short and long range goals, rolling out our schools of distinction system, planning for new facilities, and enhancing our overall programming. For instance, I've been working closely with Dr. Long, our directors and supervisors to find key efficiencies and improve programming. The strategic focus is helping us elevate our district at no extra cost and even finding savings as we plan with consolidated schools. That's enough for me. Let's hear from the staff who are making this work possible. Tonight, we will hear from Mr. Nelson, Ms. Cash Dollar, and Mrs. Luffy, who each will speak for about 15 minutes. Each presentation will be followed by a five-minute timed Q and A. We want to give each person their due time. And then at the end, we'll come back for 15 minutes or so of any follow-up questions that you have. But we want to give each director 15 minutes, five minutes of questions, 15 minutes, five, 15, five. We will begin with Mr. Nelson, our Director of Early Childhood.
Hey, Dave, can you go to the first slide? Well, he's doing that. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Widman said, my name is Drew Nelson, Director of Elementary Education, pre-K through grade three. Since becoming the Director on July 1st of this year, I've had the pleasure of meeting and working with staff in all 13 of our elementary buildings. In my career here in CASD, I've been the principal of six currently open schools, and I was the last principal at Coldbrook down the road. A goal for me as a school year started was to be in the elementary schools more than I am in my office here at this building. I want to be in the classrooms observing obstruction, talking to students and staff in order to learn what we need to do to help all students reach their full potential. I'm happy to say I'm achieving this goal. I've been able to go to each elementary school multiple times to help me learn what our students and staff need. I've attended parent meetings. I've helped at arrival and dismissal. I've gone on home visits before the school bus picks up students, and I've gone on home visits at 6 o'clock at night trying to find a parent to come to a school. So all of that said, I've had multiple opportunities to meet with the staff and the families, and three strategic goals have come to the forefront as the school year has gotten underway. Two of those goals are tied directly to academics, while the third is tied to our construction projects and building consolidation. Our three strategic goals are reading by the end of third grade, fluency in math by the end of fifth grade, and successful building consolidation. However, our reading goals do not begin in third grade and our math goals do not begin in fifth grade. They start in kindergarten with effective classroom instruction, in-class small group interventions, and pull-out interventions when necessary. We continuously assess students throughout elementary school to monitor their academic progress. And just as reading and math goals begin early, so does successful building consolidation. Our team is already working on transition plans for staff and materials from the five schools that are closing: Lurgan, Falling Spring, Guilford Hills, Grandview, and Andrew Buchanan. Student academic goal success begins in the classroom with staff training and preparation. Our reading team is creating a professional development plan that will have all K to three staff trained in structured literacy. Structured literacy is based on the science of reading, which some of you have heard of. Science reading is not a program. It's not a curriculum, but it's a body of research that explains how the brain learns to read and write. In essence, it's a roadmap for effective reading instruction. Fluency in math is not the same as math fluency, although math fluency is part of fluency in math. Fluency in math can best be thought of as flexible problem solving, meaning do our students have the skills and knowledge to solve real-world problems? Think of it as their personal toolbox. There is more than one way to solve a problem, as long as the answer is correct. We need to ensure our students have learned multiple methods to solve problems and can access their own toolbox to solve those complex problems. Our math team is also hard at work. Thank you for approving the additional intervention specialists. This increase in staffing has allowed us to send a team to administer our Acadian's Assessment to all kindergarten and first grade students in every building. The data gathered is shared with our teachers and building teams to guide instructional decisions. Our math team will also play an integral role in selection of a new math resource, including training staff. All of our decisions are data-driven using current and historical data. The question then becomes, how will we know if our students are on track to meet their academic goals? We have identified three metrics for our reading by third grade, of which students will have to achieve two. These metrics are: Students' end-of-year Acadian's Reading Composite Score must be at or above benchmark. Students must be proficient or advanced on the MAP Projected PSSA Proficiency Scale. And students must score proficient or advanced on the third-grade reading PSSA. Using these metrics, only 46% of our third-grade students last year met the reading goal. For comparison purposes, the average CASD's third-grade PSSA score of students proficient or advanced was 45%, and the state average was 55%. In math, students will have to achieve one of our two identified metrics. As our team works to select a new math resource, we'll also be adding a third math metric. Currently, the two metrics for math are: Students must score proficient or advanced on the fifth-grade math PSSA, or score proficient or advanced on the MAP Projected PSSA Proficiency Scale. We're working to determine how many of our fifth-grade students met this measure at the end of the last year. However, I can tell you 52% scored proficient or advanced on their MAP projected proficiency, and 41% of our fifth-grade students scored proficient or advanced on the math PSSA at the end of last year. Again, for comparison purposes, the state average for fifth-grade students was 43%. To reiterate, approximately half of our students in third and fifth grade are not meeting our goal. However, these numbers are an average. We do have one building with an average of 72% that met the reading goal. In an upcoming board meeting, we'll be presenting more detailed data. Using our Acadian's and MAP data, we'll also use classroom assessments. Teachers and intervention specialists will intervene early in a student's academic career when they're not making progress towards goal achievement by using a multi-tiered system of support. All buildings now currently use the Multi-Tierred System of Support, or MTSS, which is a framework developed to support student academic needs through a tiered level of interventions and high-quality instruction. Our reading and math professional development specifically focuses on Tier 1 classroom instruction. Approximately 80% of students will understand instruction in the general education classroom and progress without additional support. This year, six of our elementary schools formally use Walk to Read in kindergarten and first grade, and all elementary schools will be using Walk to Read next school year. Walk to Read is a reading intervention model where students are grouped by skill level and physically moved to different classrooms for targeted small group instruction from a teacher, including our intervention specialists. With next year's academic calendar increasing the number of instructional minutes in our day, we'll begin to implement a Walk to Math model. Tier 2 instruction refers to secondary level of support, providing targeted data-driven assistance for students not addressed in Tier 1, the classroom. It's more intensive than Tier 1, in which students are pulled for specific interventions with our intervention specialists. Approximately 15% of students require Tier 2 support. Tier 3 instruction, 5% of students who show little growth in tiers 1 and 2, and they're generally referred for specific testing to determine if they qualify for special education. By following the MTSS process and identifying our struggling readers early, we'll be able to create individualized reading plans for our Tier 2 students. They're similar to IAPs with goals, benchmark text testing, specifically designed instructional strategies. And the strategies are to be used in the classroom and in intervention groups to ensure students are learning to read. We now have deans at our elementary buildings instead of head teachers. The schedule for nine of our deans is 50% managerial and 50% intervention. Already this year, they have developed schedules to work with students on academics and Walk to Read and during other small group instruction times throughout the day. Our reading and math teams are discussing what steps need to be taken at the end of third grade and fifth grade if students haven't met the goal, using our established metrics. Some options are mandatory summer school or adjusted fourth or sixth grade schedules. We have also discussed the possibility of retention of specifically third-grade students. Currently, there are 26 states and the District of Columbia that have a law requiring retention at the end of third grade for students who do not meet the metric, their metric. Those states have established exemptions for students, as would we. For instance, a student with a reading goal or a math goal in her IAP would be eligible for an exemption, as would certain students with a language barrier. Parents play an important role in the education of their children. How can they help their students and how can we help our families? Teachers, principals, intervention specialists, all staff will be proactive and communicate with parents when a student isn't making progress. Family partnerships are important to student success, and many parents are eager to help but aren't quite sure how. Our Title I events provide families with materials and lessons they can work on at home, but that's not enough. I asked the reading department to begin working on a family learning toolkit with simple activities all families can do in both math and reading. I'm excited you approve content specialists this year, as they will be working with our intervention specialists on the toolkit, as they know the specifics of their grade-level curriculum. And I don't want to omit our partnership with pre-K in Chambersburg. There are currently 162 pre-K students in nine classrooms. The outreach from CASD must include those families before their students become our kindergartners. Upon registration, they will be provided with our family learning toolkit. However, the toolkit will also be shared with our pre-K partners to provide to families and will be posted on the website. Changing our focus now from reading and math goals, our third goal is successful building consolidation. The rezoning and school consolidation efforts involves complex challenges across multiple stakeholders and requires careful logistic planning. Rezoning will impact all elementary schools, not just the five that are closing. Closure and consolidation creates more space for us to grow as a district, provides students with education at comparable schools, allows for programmatic changes to prepare students for career readiness, and provides us with the opportunity to have all students attend the school in their home zone. The leading question we'll receive is, where's my child or where am I going to go to school? This year, we have 289 students attending school out of their home zone by using a babysitter. We also have 102 students attending school out of their home zone due to oversubscription. Oversubscription is when we, as a district, move students from their home zone to another school because our numbers are too high and the classrooms are capped. Unfortunately, our babysitter approval exacerbates the issue of oversubscribed students. And attention must be given to our special education students, and we'll work with the special education department to decide where those programs need to be housed. Once we've established our new school boundaries and determined where students are attending, we'll focus on a plan for student and family transitioning to include welcoming and closing events for both students and families at their current and new school buildings. Equally as important is our staff. Every staff member, teachers, administrators, food service custodians, will be assigned to their new work location. Team-building events will be held and are crucial to prepare them for the move and the beginning of a new school year. With our five vacant elementary schools when the consolidation's complete, we will be looking at student and district need to determine the best usage of our facilities. We'll work and coordinate with the building staff and our buildings and grounds team to ensure the logistics of moving all staff and building materials over the summer and make sure it's complete and ready for the start of the next school year. This is an exciting time. We have a plan, we have a team, we have a path. We're one Trojan community. We're working towards schools of distinction, and I'm very excited about that. Q and A?
Yes. Mr. Nelson, thank you, first of all, for all the hard work you and your team are doing. Being a former elementary teacher, I am so excited about what you're looking to do to help students progress well in the district. Just a question on the reading. I know we went with an open court program a number of years ago. Pretty much gonna stay with that, you know, because I think it's fairly heavy phonics-based or some phonics-based.
It is. Our contract isn't up for another couple of years. So right now, we have that and we have to focus on our math resource.
Right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Nelson, I echo what Carl just said. I think you made awesome progress in just a short period of time, so thank you for that. I happened to spend a whole day in a kindergarten class Friday and experienced the Walk to Read program. Thought it was fantastic. Looked like the kids were having fun. They could gain some small successes and it would be positively reinforcing for their confidence in learning how to read. I got a couple of questions, though. One is, do you have an idea as to why some schools would be at 70% success rate? Maybe that's not in reading, but in others are way woefully behind. Is it, you know, the neighborhoods, the economics, the family structures, you know, I'm sure there are multiple...
I think it's multiple factors. I don't think there's one thing you can put your finger on. I do know that all of our staff needs to be trained in structured literacy, and that will help everywhere. Walk to Read, getting into the buildings everywhere, all K and 1, that will help as well to push up everybody else to get closer to the 80% Tier 1 that we want from the MTS.
And the family reading model or program might assist in that regard?
Yes, the family toolkit that we're looking to put together. Yes, it will. With our pre-K partnerships, with the nine classrooms, those 162 kids, they're three- and four-year-olds. They're not just four-year-olds. So they're three and four-year-olds. And we just had a speech teacher reach out to us today, asking if she could do something with that for birth to three. So now we're having staff reach out too to help us get back. So it's not just a me thing, right? We want to have the staff that's in the building, OT, PT, speech, kindergarten teachers. I had a Buchanan kindergarten teacher reach out to Mr. Bigger. She wants to join the team and work together at the toolkit. So it would be everywhere we can get it to get it to them before they come to us and are our kindergarten students.
And the last question I have is, you've probably done a lot more research in reading about the idea of holding a child back from graduating from third grade and moving on until they're really reading proficient. Have you have an opinion on that yourself?
I think it's an option. Right now, we're looking at all of our options. I think that when we get our team together, we need to vet each option and figure out what's best for Chambersburg, our staff and students, and then make a decision then.
Thank you very much.
Other board members, questions for Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, you already touched a little bit on what my question was. You mentioned the partnership with First Start. How about the Franklin County Library System? Is there any partnership? Because, as you mentioned, the birth to three and actually the nutrition of pregnant mothers, et cetera, there's a lot of components that play into reasons why students come to us with deficiencies. And I know, just having been today at a Wellspan program, that the library system has a very active program for preschool. Is there any partnership with school?
I'm open to any partnership. Right now, I don't believe we have one, but if we put the toolkit together and it's right for us, the more places we can get it, the more families we can get it to, the better off we're gonna be as a district.
Yeah. I would certainly, from my own experience with the library with my grandchildren, would say that that's a wonderful place to partner with.
Dr. Long doesn't have his timer going off. I'd go with two more questions. Turn it off, Mr. Widman. We'll do two more questions and then we'll move on, and then we do come back to some questions.
Can I?
Dr. Doherty?
How many schools do we have that are not doing Walk to Read?
Six right now are, so seven are not.
Okay. What modifications, or maybe this would be a future, you could give us some information on, what are we doing for them that they are not getting those, that particular model?
So right now, they're using a what I need now model instead of Walk to Read. Every school has what I need now in second through fifth, but they're using that in K and 1. The intervention specialists are a very tight group, with Ms. Breslin talking to them. They're teaching the intervention specialists at those seven schools now, and they're starting to dabble in there. And they're already using all the Acadian's data. They have their small group instruction in the classroom. They have interventions for those Tier 2 kids with their intervention specialists. So they're doing the open court program in addition to the small groups and interventions that we have.
And you're feeling that that's sufficient at this point, or is there a way, is there a way to bolster that? I just, if you could think about that, that concerns me that we've got the Cadillac of what we think is gonna make a difference, and we have all these schools that are not, are not participating in it just yet. And I know it's hard to roll out everything at one time. But another thing that, if we could get some information on, you know, we want the 80%, the 15%, and the 5%, we're not, not anywhere close to that because on average, if you're sitting in a third-grade classroom and there's 20 kids, 10 of them are not, are not proficient in reading. And so, you know, I often think, gee... And so, you know, I often think, geez, you know, what do we, we've gotta, we've gotta fix this, we've gotta, we've gotta do better than that. And, and you guys have all done lots of good things to, to get us on the way, but it's, it's still a big concern. And then, as I'm sitting here, the retention in third grade really scares me because I don't feel as a district we have enough support for the kids that are needing it. So if we're not doing our part, I don't, I struggle with, with retaining kids. So that's just something that, you know, that's my struggle.
Right.
But I appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Ms. Cashdollar?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you thought he talked a lot, you've met your match. I am on a strict timeline. My time has not started yet. It doesn't start until I start. Okay. Practice. We've practiced quite a bit for this. This is pretty intimidating, to be very honest with you, and I'm a little bit of a mover and a shaker, so if I head this way or that way, just bear with me.
You got it.
But we, I will say that the three of us have really devoted a lot of time and energy into making this evening a lot of listening as meaningful as possible for you. So in taking the role, Melissa Cashdollar, Director of Middle Level, grades four to eight, about 100 days on the job. When we prepared for this evening and trying to summarize all of the learning that has happened in those 100 days, I did a lot of reflection. And I went back to two things. One, little-known fact, that years and years ago, as Assistant Principal at CAMHS, we worked on something intensively with a tremendous amount of investment, and that was moving from one grade six, seven middle school, CAMHS, into almost the opposite of my role now. And we split from one CAMHS, always known as CAMHS, opened before I was alive, into two grades six, seven, and eight middle schools, CAMHS North and CAMHS South. And having just spent 12 years as principal at CAMHS South, I found myself last spring, I was here, I remember the evening where I was approved in the new role, and I thought, wow, this is the start of a lot of lasts, but a lot of firsts. And so I'm transferring that into tonight and saying, I have a lot that I've done in past roles with CASD, 25 years with just this district, and I'm able to kind of apply that to the new learning and the new job of Middle Level Director. And so when we think about one Trojan community and the reconfiguration and the work, kind of the three areas of focus that have developed over the last 100 days, we're really gonna talk about building that Trojan community, the investment, the new opportunity we have, the new buildings that we're building that are all the talk in the community, as well as our Trojan spirit and a new level of unison and unity where we were slightly divisive in the past, we're now gonna transform that into something new. And so we're gonna spend a little bit of time, if you would with me, I'll be careful to keep looking over there, into kind of looking into three pockets, three priorities of my time within the new role. It is gonna require you to be a little creative. A lot of what we're doing is planning for things in 2029. So keep in mind that the work now is really building this, this grand firework display to kick off in the fall of '29 and building two our schools of distinction by 2030. So hard work, creativity, and some unification. Spent a lot of time right out of the gate in a comfort area, and that is the Middle Level. It's been my home for all but one year of my time in the district. And so when we talk about middle school collaboration, this started right at the beginning of July in that transition. We pulled the Middle Level administrative team together and new members, as well as veteran administrators, and began meeting and taking a look at our job and finding some common ground. We looked at schedules, we looked at resources. The directors had the opportunity this past summer to attend the Model Schools Conference, this national conference. And one takeaway from our view was Chambersburg School District has a tremendous amount of resources at their fingertips. And that is not always the case when you talk with people from across the country. That is an area where Chambersburg shines in our ability to provide these resources to our faculty, staff, and students. So we took a look at those. What do we have? What are we currently using? How are we using it? And how can we maximize those resources to the benefit of our students? We looked at staffing. We looked at the differences between the two buildings. We looked at programs that we offer at the Middle Level. And in doing so, we tried to find a, you know, dip our toe into the common ground area and hit the ground running at the start of the school year, providing our faculty and staff some unified efforts. So already what we've created at that sixth through eighth grade north-south collaboration effort is we started the year with a unified coordinated walkthrough. So when you think of a walkthrough, Mr. Haydock was subbing at South last week, I saw that, and administrators in both buildings are off to a really strong start of conducting walkthroughs so far this year. So as an administrator, it's not a planned formal observation, it does not tie to a teacher's evaluation, but it really does keep you grounded in what's happening in the classroom, what does it look like? So on that coordinated walkthrough, we wanted a unified peek at when an administrator stops in for a few minutes into a classroom, what are the look-for's? So it's not a blind, hey, I loved the bulletin board on the wall. But one of the focus areas for the Middle Level this year was student engagement. And in order to be able to adequately give that feedback to teachers, we want to make sure that it's data-based. So that coordinated walkthrough will give us a little reflection and feedback provided to the teachers, direct relation to student engagement. What does it look like? What are students saying? What are they doing? What level of engagement do we see in classrooms, regardless of content area? We've also looked at common observation expectations, making sure that we're providing thorough feedback to teachers, and making sure that we are grounded in our data-driven feedback. A big work in progress at the Middle Level, and it's already begun, is we are planning to provide and roll out a unified middle school schedule for next year, '26, '27. Right now, both middle schools do work on a common schedule but are teamed differently and might have smaller variances in how they, they function day-to-day. So next year, it dovetails perfectly with our professional development, our calendar for next year for school and the professional development opportunities we have, dovetails beautifully into almost like a trial run. Knowing we're moving towards fall of 2029, what can we provide next year for our teachers that we can use a unified schedule at that Middle Level? So by the end of February, and we've already announced this to faculty and staff, they will have the first phase allowable for feedback into our sneak peek at our schedule at the Middle Level for next year, providing March through the end of the year to kind of fine-tune, make some refinements, and everyone will leave this school year knowing at the Middle Level the school schedule for next year. So that, that is making sure that our staff is in the right spot, but also understands that we are gonna maximize the amount of work that we are capable of accomplishing and providing as much student success as possible. A hidden gem of my time so far as director is probably in an area near and dear to my heart, the instruction, the curriculum, and the instructional work. And you made this possible by your support with providing content specialists. So whether you knew it or not, they were in full force yesterday. It was an amazing way to spend a professional development day, but I really have spent a lot of my time working with the content specialist in different ways. We'll talk a little bit about that. But they are really a connective tissue from, from my lens or the administrative lens into the classroom. And they have the ability to do that without the responsibility of supervision. So it really is more from a coaching standpoint, a supportive standpoint, a unified work effort without that supervision, you know, wear the dark hat, they don't have to worry about that risk. So they have been a tremendous success in leading the charge for professional development. Yesterday, on our October 13th day, all of the directors had an opportunity to spend some time watching content specialists lead training sessions. So we were, we were in there, we were observers, we didn't, you know, take control or it didn't become a question-and-answer session. And over the past several weeks in working with them, even from the week of induction, new teacher induction, they hit the ground running with us. But in doing so, I have learned very quickly that this group of people, maybe a small force of 36 people, are very invested in student success, especially instruction. So the selection of these folks was critical. And not only are they invested, but they are planners by nature, they're goal-oriented, they can see the long picture. There are moments in the job where I get slightly overwhelmed in thinking, you know, four architecture meetings and plan for 2030 and build two new schools and open those by '29, just like they get overwhelmed with how do we have all of this ready for our next teacher session? But they are planners and they can see short-term goals and how they lead to achieving long-term goals. So that has been a blessing to discover that. Goal-oriented, but also they have both sides of the coin. They are knowledgeable in the art and the craft of teaching, and there's a difference. And they are knowledgeable in content knowledge as well as just good instruction, high-quality teachers and learning. So there are, I had the opportunity years ago to work with, we call it NISL, the National Institute of School Leadership. There were several of us from the district that spent a lot of time working with NISL. And we learned not only the importance of learning with and through others is a big takeaway, research-based, as well as understanding the importance of high-quality teachers and instruction, and these folks have it. So they are already providing meaningful and relevant professional development. No one, just like you, wants to sit through a bunch of presentations and we never revisit the content. So they are providing things that directly tie back to the classroom and the people in the trenches every single day are able to then say, I walked out of there with a new skill that I can apply right away. Beautifully timed with our commitment to you, the district, the directors, as well as other educational colleagues that we have on the team, are creating a very specific calendar for professional development for next school year. Before the end of this school year, all faculty and staff will have a very detailed prioritized plan mapped out in calendar form of what our professional development opportunities for next year will look like. So no longer are we guessing, and I remember as a teacher, you'd leave in June ready to go home for a break, and you wouldn't really think about it much throughout the summer, only to arrive back in August and wonder, what are we doing? You know, those first three days and beyond. Our goal and our commitment, which we've already started publicizing, is a comprehensive professional development calendar in their hands before the end of this current school year. So they will know what's on the docket and what that will look like. So it dovetails beautifully with the calendar that we already have in place and approved. Wow, here's where I spend a lot of my time. This is the talk of the town. If you drive out past Green Village, I passed it on the way home from the Penn State game this weekend. You can see that plot of land and I'm already imagining in my mind what I see on, on blueprints every other week. So the second area of work is really this reconfiguration of not only grades four to six, but also seven, eight. I felt very comfortable diving in at the Middle Level, and so I pushed myself a little out of my own comfort zone to better equate myself with what that four, five partition looked like. I need your help, I need your support, in starting to really publicize the importance of the two models that will carry into the reconfiguration. The Middle Level, Chambersburg Area Middle School, back to CAMHS, will become our seven, eight building. And that middle school concept, the education of the whole child, will remain in full force, very comfortable there. But there will be a larger shift at the next level in the four-to-six building, and we'll begin to adopt that intermediate school mindset. And that's different. We picture elementary. It is not an elementary building and it's not a middle school. It is truly an intermediate school concept, so Chambersburg Area Intermediate School. I would love for you to start, begin publicizing that as we talk about that throughout the community. Our four-to-six building, really intermediate-minded, that will require us to grow in our shift as well as our middle school model. So not only does it really enhance change and kind of become more robust in a learning experience we offer students, but I hear you when you say, we have to be financially, fiscally responsible when we do so. So a lot of our work right now started in July with me trying to catch up. And our four-to-six plans and our seven, eight plans were quite different in where we were in the stages, both within the schematic design phase at this point, nearing the end of that, getting ready to shift into our next phase. But we've really moved into a parallel movement with that four-to-six and seven, eight moving almost exactly the same pace. So a lot of work being done when we talk about figuring out where we go and the differences to really carve out the nuances between four, six, seven, eight. So we want to highlight what is working and define the components of each, four, six, intermediate, seven, eight, middle, figure out what we want to carry forward when we open these two new buildings. As we do that, we have already jumped into some scenarios and possibilities of designing schedules. This will be a work in progress for us for the next year, if not more. We're looking at doing this with what do we currently have and where do we currently want to go when we open these buildings? A little did you know, and in, in my homework, and I, I was told by a colleague, you know, find some time each week to do a little research. And so my homework for potential related arts, we call them specials, I researched, wow, how many courses do our current kindergarten through fifth-grade students in Chambersburg receive? And the answer's eight. They get English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies, PE, Library, Art, and Music for six years. And so the new four-to-six, seven, eight configuration gives us a perfect opportunity to build the offering that we have for our students. So fourth grade being the first time they are all together, we are, we're brainstorming a way to provide a six-day schedule. We currently, at the elementary level, operate on a five-day schedule where those five days, one is a non-special day, but we have four specials that we offer. We would love to see between grades four and eight, everyone working on a six-day cycle, which means we get to provide new courses for our students. So running scenarios of what this schedule really looks like, 28 PE classes in a grade, we'll need you to sub. And figuring out, do we have the manpower to pull that off without adding a tremendous amount of staff? So please keep in mind, as we work on, you know, these classroom observations and the educational instructional aspects of things, and tying in input from our stakeholders, all of our groups involved, we also know that we're looking for efficiencies and ways to provide STEM. You've talked about that. Integrated Arts, you mentioned at a former meeting, and other opportunities for our students without then coming to the board and saying, we need to hire 15 teachers to do so. So that's a lot of responsibility that I take very seriously, but that's all part of the conversation now and will be for the next year, year and a half. Oh, I'm getting the look, I'm getting close to time. Works in progress. The work does not end. Excuse me. So we're gonna keep focusing our future work in three main areas, making sure that decisions that we're making are really grounded in data, they're not guesses. Within this role, I never wanted to find myself in a position where one person makes a really impactful decision and doesn't have any data to show for it. So we make sure that when we do look at instruction, academics, this is a sneak peek, a tiny little sneak peek into the data presentation that you will get within the next couple of weeks. We look at tying our progress back to the data dashboard. Middle Level has historically been very successful in growing students, so we took, we talk about growth. You've heard us talk about measures of academic progress, our MAP testing, that measures the growth of a student over the course of a year. We can even compare student progress from year to year, changing the cohort. We talk about proficiency levels and our career readiness and all of that data that leads into that future-ready score. We're also doing a tremendous amount of work and planning when we talk about those schedules in the curriculum. schedules in the curriculum area. Math is going to shine in the spotlight here in the very near future, on the horizon as our focus, but followed by all areas, making sure that decisions regarding curriculum, our standards-aligned decisions, we can support those, they're measurable, and that we already have or can pair effective resources in making sure that we are accomplishing those. Our best utilization in maximizing those efforts is our goal, and the staffing is also a great part of that. So putting the people, the right people, in the right spot. Funny story, because I could tell stories all night. These are two actual pictures of some blueprints that we get in our decisions and our discussions with architects. And Matt Varner was sitting in an architecture meeting with me a week and a half ago, Mark, and we slowly started to look around the room, making some pretty big decisions, and realized that by the fall of 2029, this core group of district leadership making decisions now, all but Matt Varner and myself, will be gone. So we have, number one, a very heavy responsibility, two sets of shoulders in making decisions to open these buildings, or we have a lot of opportunity, as my colleague would say, to point fingers because they won't be there when we open those doors. So I hope it is the first, our hard work and responsibility will pay off. And lastly, we're back to our Trojan community. We are going to be pushed a little bit, that's how we grow, to record these podcasts that Mr. Bigger mentioned earlier, and I was a little resistant to that. Never have, rarely do I listen to them, but never have I ever recorded one. So it'll be a new way for me to stretch and strengthen my own capacity within the role of director. But I find myself reflecting again in preparation for tonight. I am surrounded by new directors and new positions and a lot of newness, and through that newness, we are working at a hundred and ten percent effort to strengthen the capacity of one Trojan community. And that really is the end goal. And as we do that, I realize that we're interweaving the strengths of one another, and I have learned a lot just through conversations with my colleagues. But I'm hoping that what you see tonight is a continuation of effort, K to twelve, and that is what is going to strengthen our Trojan community. So thank you. Questions?
Yes. Mrs. Cash Dollar, I can tell you are a middle school because of the energy you bring, because that group of seventh, eighth and sixth graders are always full of energy. And I appreciate the energy you're bringing.
Unpredictable chaos.
I appreciate so much you thinking ahead with professional development, because that is a key with teachers. I don't care what level it is, it's that professional development. And also I like what you do by the walking around. I read a little leadership book years ago, so I asked to read, Lincoln on Leadership, and he did the manage by walking around. And you can learn so much and just get a feel, it helps the people that see the person, but it also helps the person doing it by that managing by walking around. Thank you so much for everything you're doing.
I have a question. Can you, do you have a lot of first-time teachers in your, under your leadership? And how are they relating to, is there peer-to-peer mentoring? Or are they working more with the content specialists? How's the newness that you mentioned, how's that happening?
So I will tell you, I can speak primarily from the middle level, and we're very aware of new teachers at that level. But then K to twelve, one of our first roles as directors was to work with our new teacher induction program and set up a new approach to supporting first-year teachers. So our content specialists are serving as mentors for our brand-new first-year teachers. That is one role that they are playing this year. That has been amazing to see. So in some of those conversations, I had one last week with one of the middle-level content specialists, and he shared with me, very honestly, I wish I would have been able to see one of my colleagues teach my first-year teaching. So one of the things that he has done as a content specialist, as a mentor for a new teacher, was really partner with that person. And we've done that by content area. So all new teachers have a content specialist as a mentor, as well as other building supports. So I think that will pay dividends, that's sustainable, and we're supporting new teachers. With fifty percent of new teachers leaving the profession within five years, it is our responsibility to do everything we can to retain them.
Thank you.
I just had a comment. I'm very pleased with the content specialists and the expertise they bring, and they're right there at the classroom. And so bringing them in and doing all this training is extremely helpful. Also, I see that the schedules are going to come together on both middle schools, the quicker we can bring continuity between the two, I think that really helps the district. So thank you for all your hard work.
I may not live to see it, but I'm looking forward to the fact that having the students together from fourth grade on is going to not only affect the educational community, but the community in general. As students become at a very early age familiar with differences among their peers, I see that as a potential to see improvement in our adult community at some point in the future, as I say, may not be while I'm still observing it, but I think it has the potential to make a major difference in our community because community is very important.
Having been someone that has done one middle school and two, I also see the importance of the unification as early as fourth grade.
Well, and having been in a two junior high setting when I was in Faust and other students were at Central, I know that it's important to get us back together.
Yeah, I have a comment too, if I may. So I arrived on the school board being fairly uninformed about a whole lot of things that go on in the school district. And it takes a short bit of time to just all of a sudden become interested in things that I had no interest in being, asking any questions at all, thinking about them. So one of the things was, and you mentioned the idea of four through six, this new, it's not elementary, it's not middle school, it's something way different. So I've been reading about middle childhood and how the challenges these kids face. But what you said about the middle school or the intermediate, it's a notion that I had never heard of until Mr. Bigger arrived. And when he threw that out there, I didn't know much about it, but the more I hear about it, and the more I hear Mr. Nelson and you, and I'm sure Mrs. Luffy talk about what it will mean, and you being the real professionals, that inspires me to give more confidence to the decisions that we're making now and the vision that Mr. Bigger brought forward. So that inspires me, inspires me to maybe sub more and a little bit of guilt that I feel like, gee, I should be doing more, thank you for that. But I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. Did I reserve enough time for Mrs. Luffy? Poor lady has to go last.
Thank you.
When I was explaining to my husband this evening that I had to give this presentation, he said, are you first? And I was like, I'm last. He goes, you better take candy. And I was like, I don't know how that would be received. But I'm Deborah, what'd you say?
I'll have some.
I have some in my office, I have a big stash of it. But I'm Deborah Luffy, I'm the Director of Nine Through Twelve Education, and I am thankful for this opportunity to speak with you this evening about my first few months back in Chambersburg School District. So like my colleagues, I did start on July first, but unlike my colleagues, I did have a little break from Chambersburg, so I don't have the year's continuity that they might have had. I did serve Chambersburg School District starting in 1999 as a chemistry teacher, and then I transitioned to Dean of Students and Assistant Principal and Academic Principal. And then after serving the district for about thirteen, fourteen years, I went up to Huntington School District to be the Head Principal up there. And if you're familiar with it, it's right by Ray's Town Lake, beautiful area. And it's a much smaller system, so you get to learn other skills and trades when you're in a small district like that. But probably two or three months into that position as the Head Principal, the superintendent came into my office and said, hey, I have a great opportunity for you, you're going to be the middle school principal too. And I was like, oh, that's awesome! And I really did feel that like that was a great learning experience for me because I got to learn about a division of the school system that I did not have any background in at that point. And then I really learned about the teaming aspect and the value of teaming students, the cross-curricular projects that can occur within a team, along with project-based learning that some of the STEM teams did. So it was a great opportunity for me to learn and expand my own education and leadership through that experience. And then after four years, I came back to the area and served at Shippensburg Area School District's Principal for the past eight years. And again, I had some experiences there that prepared me for the position here because Shippensburg Area Senior High School was on a block schedule. And so I learned the do's and don'ts of block scheduling in that experience. And so when I heard about Chambersburg and some of the changes that were happening here and some of the excitement that was getting stirred here, I knew that I would like to return back to my original starting spot as, at Chambersburg, and I'm very fortunate that I am the Director of the Nine Through Twelve Education. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead to the next slide. And working with the Career Magnet School and the Cassius, working with that one Trojan community and working together and having the two buildings working together to create the best opportunity for our students having the best instructional support and career support in that division. So go ahead to the next slide. From my conversations from July first, meeting with administrators, meeting with counselors, meeting with teachers, hearing where we are and relearning people, relearning policies, relearning programs, procedures, I mean, every day I learn something new. I have three pillars that I'm focusing on. One is the culture, creating an environment where students and staff both are engaged and feel valued and respected, and that there is communication about the upcoming changes that are occurring within our division. The academic excellence, leaning towards that school of distinction by 2030, making sure our students are getting the instruction they need to perform the way they need to perform on assessments. And also that career exploration, preparing them for the next phase after high school, and then making sure that we are an operationally efficient part of the district, making sure that our two resources that we have, people, teachers and staff, along with the time and the schedule, is the best use of our resources that we can to make sure that our students are getting the best opportunity. So go ahead, next slide. When I'm talking about the culture of the two buildings, particularly Career Magnet School and Cassius, you know, when I met Career Magnet School's staff at the beginning of the year, I had an activity that I did with them, and I had, I said, tell me something about the Career Magnet School that I don't know. And they told me that it's a small school feel, it's a family-focused building, you know, it's a great environment. And if you're sitting there right now, you're probably thinking, that's exactly the culture we want, like, all of our students and staff to feel. And that is true, and we are going to try to continue that, but there's an overarching uncertainty right now because some of the changes that are going to be happening in this division. You know, we're talking about some academies, and I believe Mr. Acker's going to be talking to you in the next month or so about the academies at the Career Magnet School and potentially at Cassius as well. And so what does that mean for them as teachers, but then also what does it mean for them as students? You know, how do we make sure that the planning of this does not disrupt their educational opportunities, but like, we are working with them to make sure that they are prepared for that transition? With the Cassius culture, that's a little bit different. Usually when you think about a school system, you have the people, the leadership, you have the resources, and then you also have the schedule or the time. And so you have these three spheres that are kind of overlapping, you know? And when you disrupt one of those spheres, it can cause a major change in the culture, all right? And so Cassius has actually had the great opportunity to show their perseverance and resilience to all three of those changes happening. This year, because Mr. Acker transitioned to the Director of Community Partnerships, that left a vacancy in that seat at Cassius. And so we got Mr. Brennais, and he's been a great addition to the Cassius staff. But again, with that uncertainty of someone new, how is he going to do evaluations? What are his walkthroughs going to look like? You know, how is he going to communicate? What are his faculty meetings like? What does a professional development look like? You know, all of these what-ifs, right? Like, they just don't know. And so it's going to take time, and he's done an excellent job communicating out his expectations, but there's still that uncertainty. When you talk about a schedule change, that can also, you know, shift the building. And sometimes when they talk about a schedule change, they talk about changing the time between periods, from a four-minute transition time to a two-minute transition time, or extending lunch maybe by five minutes, or reducing homeroom by four minutes, right? Those are all little tweaks. Cassius actually experienced a major overhaul this year. They went from a traditional schedule, forty-five-ish minutes, class periods during the day, seven or eight of them, to four classes that are ninety minutes in length. So think about doing something for about ninety minutes, all right, with twenty of your buddies. That's what Cassius is doing now on the block schedule. So they did have professional development, and they continue to get, you know, even tips with Mr. Brennais's weekly updates, but that is a total shift to that building. It's something that they hadn't had before, and that they really need to make sure that we're supporting them and continue to support them with that major shift. In addition, because this is the second year of the iPads at the high school, we needed to implement a new learning management system, Schoology. Now Schoology is something that the Career Magnet School has had for years, but Cassius did not. And so Cassius teachers were using Google Classroom to store their resources, their tests, their activities, their lesson plans, all sorts of things, communication to their students. And this year, you know, we're asking them to shift from Google Classroom to Schoology. So again, while it might not seem like a major thing, that is a massive shift for those teachers. So when you have that trifecta of change, they are experiencing a lot of change in that culture, and they are doing it well. I mean, you know, but as leaders and as supporters for our teachers and our students, we need to make sure that we are supporting them as they're navigating these multiple transitions simultaneously. So that's really important. Next slide. So the two goals for, next slide, maybe. The one thing that I heard probably the most often, once I think the students started getting their schedules and teachers recognizing the Cassius schedule of what it looked like as the Bell schedule, was that students did not have time for these extracurricular activities throughout the day. I see this nod, this head shaking, so it's affirming, that there is no time for clubs during the day, there is no time for remediation during the day, there's no time for mentoring during the day. I'm not sure how familiar you are with the HERO program at the high school, but because we are in a school improvement process, we have to have a positive behavior intervention system where you set out the behavior expectations on what you want the students, how you want them to behave in the classroom, the bus, the cafeteria, and then you give lessons or mini lessons on how they should be behaving. And HERO stands for, do you remember? Respect. I thought it was respectful. Yes, right. So they get those lessons at the beginning of the year, and then they're supposed to be getting other lessons throughout the year. In addition, our Freshman Academy, we have that here over at the high school, and it's a great resource, and we're very glad to have it back. But again, those freshman students should be getting LINK lessons from LINK leaders that are upperclassmen who have been trained to provide these lessons on, you know, how to be a better student in the school. So this time, during a normal block schedule, would be like a resource period throughout the day, or maybe a flex period, or a Trojan time during the day, it doesn't matter what we call it, but it's a time that students can do these other activities, and that does not occur now. So we are making sure that, like, Mr. Brennais and his administrative team with, along with the instructional team, is looking at revamping that for next year so that we have that. Right now, these lessons and these things are getting pushed into the instructional time, which is not ideal by any stretch, but that's what we're, that's the solution for this year, but we need to make sure for next year, we have a stronger schedule so that students can be involved in these activities. All right, next slide. The cultural goals then would be the transparent communication with our stakeholders, our teachers and our students, that when we are doing changes in the delivery of our instruction or other changes in the building, that or other changes in the building, that we're communicating that out, and then also making sure that our schedule is the most optimized schedule we can have so students can be involved in other activities. Okay, go ahead, next slide. All right, the second pillar that I'm going to be focusing on is curriculum and the academic excellence linked with the schools of distinction. Many of those methods that we will be using to determine a school of distinction is to make sure that our students are performing well on the standardized assessments. So that's really looking at the Keystone Exams courses, the biology, the literature and the algebra, and making sure that they're, the sequencing is appropriate, the resources are comparable between Career Magnet School and Cassius, and that they are making sure that they're meeting those standards that are within the system. In addition, the assessment areas of making sure that we are providing assessment strategies and an environment that is conducive to positive test-taking strategies. And finally, the career connections. This is providing a more focused pathway for our students. Mr. Acker and I took a team of teachers and administrators from both Career Magnet School and Cassius down to Kentucky to visit the Ignite Institute. I think some of you might have visited down there too. And it is a great school where the students select an academy, and they attend these academies that are focused on biomedical, or engineering, or aviation, or robotics. And they have a very prescribed pathway for their courses and their internship so that provides them a stronger foundation for once they leave Cassius or Career Magnet School that they can be a better student and employee for that environment. In addition, I would also say that, you know, some of our more rigorous programming, like our AP and our IB, while we are seeing increases in the student seat counts for those courses, like how do we make sure that the students are taking the assessments that are linked with those more rigorous programs? So how do we make sure that the students that are in the AP courses are actually taking the AP exam? Because right now, we have about eight hundred and three kids in AP classes right now. That's up from last year by about a hundred and twenty. And for our IB, we're up probably about a hundred students in classes, but not necessarily sitting for the diploma. So how do we make sure that those kids are like staying in that diploma program and we're increasing that as well? Next slide. So some of the strategies, you know, we're going to implement research-based strategies, that's the different strategies that we know, inquiry-based labs and the steel standards and all of that that goes along with that, independent reading, explicit instruction, those are things that we're going to be making sure our teachers are doing during that instructional time. And then, like I said, expanding the rigorous programming in the career academies. And again, Mr. Acker is going to go much more in-depth in the career academies when he does his presentation in a few months. Okay, next slide. And the final pillar that I'm going to be working on with the staff at both the Career Magnet School and Cassius is the increasing the efficiency of our schedule and making sure that our schedules are running at maximum efficiency because some of our class sizes are a little on the low side. And so when we have a system this large, we want to make sure that all of our classes are, you know, at at least a certain enrollment, whether that's ten students per class or fifteen students per class, we want to make sure that we are, making sure the students are in these classes where there are other students, and we're maximizing that opportunity for all students. In addition, the leadership development, you heard about the content specialists, expanding that leadership opportunity for teachers. I would say my focus right now at the high school division would be working with the assistant principals at both buildings, making sure that they're getting additional opportunities for instruction and curriculum development. I actually meet with each assistant principal once a month and do walkthroughs and talk about the principal effectiveness to make sure that they are on target with making sure that they are seeing themselves besides just managers of discipline or attendance. So we want to make sure that we're developing those leaders for the next, you know, generation, so to speak, so we are continuing to work on that as well. Next slide. And so one of the goals for scheduling process is making sure that it's a comprehensive timeline, which I know we're already working on that for Cassius, and that we also have multiple stakeholders from both Career Magnet School and Cassius working on the schedule for next year. We already talked about a training, and we already have those scheduled for early December and November so that we can start working on that. In addition, I mentioned about integrating the assistant principals into those instructional leadership roles so that they are working on that teacher development and that curriculum delivery. All right, last slide. So moving forward together as the One Trojan Community, I need to make sure that all of the stakeholders are staying engaged and that they're asking questions and that they contribute to the solutions that benefit our entire learning community, along with our commitment of making sure that we're communicating regularly about changes and that planning processes for our student success and our staff support. Thank you.
Questions?
I had one, and this might not, this might be for, we had talked about, you mentioned the students, student voices matter. With all this big shaking and moving that we have going on, I know we had mentioned earlier about the buy-in from the students as far as naming or whatever that was, are we, are they involved in any of this stuff now as far as what some of the...
Naming, no. Not yet.
Just to exact, not in depth.
Not yet.
Because I was thinking about that, I was going to wait till all three of you had a chance, but thank you, I appreciate all the presentations and the slides. But I keep looking at the consistency, and I see One Trojan Community, I hear schools of distinction by 2030, and again, I love the word "community" in there because as I've said here at the beginning of every meeting, this is an investment, and the investors are the community, i.e. tax dollars, whether it's local taxes, state taxes, or federal taxes. I just would love to see what the, what the real symbol, motto, symbol of schools of distinction or what this is, okay?
You're looking at it.
Yeah, and it would have been great to have some student involvement. And I'd like to congratulate the gentleman who got an AA on the HERO acronym, so.
That's Parker, the student that shouted me last year.
Okay. Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
I see that by the sign-in, but I wasn't going to call him out by name. Thank you, young man. Other questions? Mrs. Duffy, and then we'll open it up to the whole team.
I have a question for Mrs. Duffy. Admittedly...
It's Luffy.
Luffy.
Did I say Duffy? Okay, Mr. McGee.
Parker, I need help with names, okay?
Next time you'll get candy.
All right. So let me just say upfront, you know, we all have a pet rock. My pet rock is cell phones. And I would like your opinion. I think it's unfair, the policy we have right now. I think it's unfair because aside from the fact that cell phones distract from the educational process, the fact that the role of a teacher is one thing, but to be the enforcer and almost a recovery specialist because the kids don't have cell phones, that's unfair. So I'm believing my idea to have a more draconian policy is a good thing, and I know it won't be popular with some students, but I've heard some other students, a matter of fact, our new student rep say that cell phones are one of the problems that he observes. So I would like your opinion on whether you think that might improve learning or be a road too hard to take.
That was from slide 26, says that we're...
There's a lot of research out there that indicates that cell phones are a distraction to students, even if it's like in their pocket or in, you know, somewhere in the room, just that, you know, being visible or being near them is a distraction. So I know that other school districts, you know, have implemented more drastic measures and saying, no cell phones allowed. I actually had a conversation today with an assistant principal at Cassius, that very question came up in our conversation about cell phones and, you know, do we need to take a stronger stance, you know, at some point? Because he did indicate to me, just through his walkthroughs and his observations, that when he's in the classrooms, they are not out in the classroom in the learning environment. So that is positive, but if you walk down the hall, you will see kids on their cell phones. So I know freshman academy even has like little packets or pouches at the side of their table or desk to make sure that the kids can put them in those pouches, which is a great, you know, solution for the time being, but if you as a board think you need to take a greater stance, that's, you know, you can make that.
Mr. Ritter?
I was going to say, I don't, I mean, I think we are where we are because the administrators have said, this is what we think is best for now. So, but I think if you're in the classrooms on a regular basis, if you all feel like we should take a greater stand, I think there, I've heard from numerous board members that we would support a stronger stance if that's where you are, but we followed your lead on this and not taking a stronger stance. That's, I think that's why we are where we are. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I think I mentioned it took us eighteen years to get to this problem, let's not, you know, rip it away from them in two months.
Fair enough.
So it's start the conversation, let's start with the slow, out of the classroom and work your way up.
Well, I know they're not working on the budget, but there is a bill that has bipartisan, bipartisan support from bell to bell, no cell phones in any school. So, I mean, that might force everybody's hand at that point, and then you don't have to be the heavy bad guy because, oh, state said we had to do that. Just on a fun little note, I really appreciate your presentation. The day after we approved you, I got a call from someone that worked with you in Schipensburg, who I can relay their name later, giving me the what-for for stealing you away as it was, because you are very missed in Schipensburg and we are very happy to have you, as well as all the other directors. I think some of the decisions that we make here, sometimes I think we don't realize how impactful they might be, but seeing these presentations and everyone being excited about the decisions that we're making, hopefully as we move forward, and we know there's always tough decisions, that we can see a little bit of, of a glimmer, you know, because from some of the board members, I know we're hearing it from the public all the time, you're spending all our money, you're doing all these things, and they can't quite see the bigger picture. But having the buy-in from the staff and, and the administration is really, really important, and hopefully we can keep supporting that and getting that into the community to get them a little more on board than where they are. But these presentations, I know that Chris said you guys might have been a little nervous, but I really think you all three did a stellar job, so thank you for the time and effort for putting that together for us, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up for questions.
I just would like to make a comment. The comment is, with, I, I didn't realize how many massive changes were happening at the high school, because you see them in pockets, but when you were delivering all that, I'm sitting there thinking, to thank all of the high school for what you're doing because it is, it is a lot for the teachers and also for the support that you're, you're giving them, because it's very necessary. Thank you.
I'll just make a comment about the mid-level, something I hadn't thought about yet. It seems like a lot to be building two schools at once for intermediate and middle, and I know for some of you it is a lot, but what I hadn't thought, well, I mean, yes, there's a third one for elementary, but what I hadn't thought about was that there may be some efficiencies from doing two at the same time, in that you walk into a meeting with architectural firm, and then the next week you have a meeting with the other one, and, oh, we just, we just devoted brain space to this already, that, I don't, I hadn't thought about that angle yet, but, and I would imagine they each have their own process where it's probably not entirely the same sequence, but perhaps that's helpful in some respects, so.
Thank you to all of our new directors, and we look forward to hearing more. Thank you, job well done.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Items that will be on our consent agenda at our voting meeting in two weeks, item 5.01, 2026 summer capital projects. This is Stouffer.
I'm actually going to turn this over to Mr. Varner.
Yes, this item represents the list of 2026 capital projects recommended for approval. The proposed projects meet our goal of maintaining our annual expenditures at two million below, or below, totaling about 1.7 million. This level of work is also manageable for me and my team. Dave, if you could pull up the attachment there, the capital plan. So this, this list was developed based on our capital project plan. Many of you are familiar with this and have seen this in future or previous presentations. All of the items come directly from that plan and are not new items, with the exception of the final item there, the creation of two faculty restrooms at CMS. This was an addition that came from a request from faculty and building staff. The request is well justified and was recommended for inclusion into the project list based on the relatively small scope and cost. I listed all the projects there, I'm not going to step down through each one, but if anybody has any specific questions regarding any of that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Varner, and maybe this was done before and I missed it, the bleachers in the auxiliary gym, are they finally finished, or is that still a project yet to be done?
Well, I can, I can promise that there's progress made. They are, I would say, seventy-five percent installed. The goal is to have those completed by the 23rd. I think that we are going to exceed that goal and maybe even be finished as early as the 17th of this week, so moving right along.
I see all the other things with auxiliary gym, that's what made me think, because it's, it's a pity you can't use the bleachers, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Have the walls been fixed?
As far as...
Those pads that...
Yeah, so baby steps, so we, we are attempting to make some progress in-house with some wall patching and some painting summer. That's not on the project list, that would be done in-house through our staff. As far as the wall padding, it is included in, in one of the items here on the capital project plan.
I missed that.
I had a question on the, on the resurfacing of the track. I said it was twenty-year life expectancy, do we just, didn't we just do something to that a few years back?
Five years, five, six years ago, maybe?
Yeah, I don't think that, unless I had a typo on my capital project plan...
Maybe the other turf.
Oh, okay. I thought it was a try, okay. Or was it the lines, maybe they painted the lines on there or something?
Yeah, so, so we did not resurface the track and field, the track this year. We actually, we cleaned it, we striped it, and we did some other minor repairs to that. So that was to get us about, we assume about six or seven years before that we would need to resurface that again. Resurfacing is a, is a very, it's a larger, more in-depth process than what we did this summer, so.
Thank you for your work. This is a busy summer, so.
Yeah, busy, but I think manageable.
Yeah.
A weighty hoist. Any other questions on item 5.01, that'll be on the consent agenda. 5.02, removal of contracted bus drivers and van drivers, van drivers and agents. This is Stouffer.
As you can see on the agenda item, we have three different contractors, where we will be unapproving these drivers to drive for us, so our recommendation is that the board accept their removal.
And you usually ask if you want us to pull any out, our board members, unless you're going to go one by one, just from procedure.
Well...
It's not a board.
It's up to you.
Well, we're not voting tonight.
No, 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 no.
So let's review the items first. Okay, 5.03, any comments from administration? For additional contracted bus drivers. 504 to 508, administration, any items? Okay, board members, any questions on any of the five series? Okay, that'll go forward on consent agenda in two weeks. General, 7.01, general operating... General, seven point oh one, general operating budget, twenty twenty-five parameters resolution.
Yes, as you recall, in September, Mr. Fry was here, presented some information regarding our first bond that we will issue by the end of December. This is the resolution, the parameters resolution that will allow us to, to proceed with that.
Seven point oh two, gifts, grants, and donations, the list is attached. Questions or additions to this item?
Just a recognition of the benefit of the community in supporting the various things.
Okay, policy and legislation, eight point oh one, policies with no changes. I see we have two of them, one twenty-three point three and one forty-three. Item eight oh two, first reading of policies, the one twenty-three point one, two oh seven and two oh nine point one, two sixteen point one, two eighteen point three, and two twenty-seven. Questions or discussions on those policies for first reading? Eight, eight point oh three, second reading, policy one hundred, policy one eighteen, one forty-two, two sixteen, and two nineteen. These, those policies will be for second reading. Time's a baseball game on tonight, Mr. McKee?
Eight oh eight.
Not looking yet. The reading's done. My Phillies are out of it, and yeah.
Colts are doing well.
Amen. Okay, item ten, point zero one, members of the audience are invited to comment on agenda and non-agenda items. There were no, no members who signed in, but as we always do, and there aren't many, that won't prohibit you from having a comment if you wish to have one. So don't everyone run off to the podium at one time, because this is your opportunity.
All right.
And just give us your name, please.
I'm Mike Pedinter, I work for the school district in the IT department. So you, a few of you may be aware of the support staff contract that you'll be voting on in two weeks. You may have seen an email that was sent to you either individually or as a group. So I just wanted to bring to your attention the, I guess shortcomings of this contract that a lot of the members of our support staff group are feeling, and that we feel that this doesn't fit within the best interest of ourselves, and by virtue of that, not the best interest of the district going forward to meet these school of distinction goals. So if you'd like to discuss the emails that you've received, we'd like to have a dialogue about that, and just urge you to revisit this contract and hopefully vote no on it. We feel we weren't very well represented when this was presented to us, and felt a sense of like urgency to vote this through, and some veiled threats on not passing it in our union. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board tonight before it's voted on in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Hi, my name's Amy Wibley. I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but after hearing the presentations from you all, and specifically Mr. Nelson, because I have kids, I have a kindergartner and a third grader, and I just wanted to comment and say I attended an event, a Title One event last week for my kindergartner, specifically for parents of kindergarten students, and I just wanted to voice how extremely helpful that was for me as a parent, trying to help and make sure that my student is learning to read and will reach that goal of reading by third grade, because how they learn to read now is very different from how we all learned, and so it was extremely helpful to hear from the teachers directly, specifically the intervention specialist as well, Mrs. Brookins was really great, and they also provided resources for us to take home, as you kind of referenced. There's games, there's flashcards, there are a lot of things that we can then use at home that we wouldn't have otherwise had, and it matches what they are seeing and learning at school. So I just want to thank you all and all the teachers for their hard work, and you guys all on the board for supporting those efforts as we work to reach that goal of every kid reading by third grade, because it is extremely important. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Parker Christofel, I'm a sophomore at Cassius, and after hearing Ms. Luffy's presentation about like, you know, all the change and transitions at the high school, I would like to see more students' voices in the transitions and change. I feel like if we were to do more student groups and more student discussions about the changes and see, have more student opinions, more on our education and how our school day goes, I feel like it would help a lot of students just feel better about the change. So I would just like to recommend something like that. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members of the audience, agenda or non-agenda items?
I'm a little nervous.
You got it.
Hi, my name's Judy Gata, I've lived in Chambersburg all my life, I graduated in nineteen seventy-seven, don't add it up, I'm old. But I would like to say also to the board, we, a lot of us are not happy with the contract and how we were treated, so I want you all to consider that. I'm a TA at the high school, we have a very important role, very important role, as far and, as, and the PCA's. So you all need to be aware of that, and I think some of you need to come in our classroom and see what goes on and what goes into what we do. We are very below the wages of other districts for our jobs. But I am very impressed, I've never been to a board meeting, this is the first one, and I am sixty-six, but I am very impressed with everything that goes into it, all the time, energy, I, you know, I'm honored to be a part of the, the Cassius community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the audience, the public?
Hold on.
Hi, I'm Wendy Shear, I also work for the district, I'm a TA out at CMS, and I would like to say that I think that what your plan for the future of the school is, what you're planning, it sounds wonderful, but I'm afraid that if you agree to this contract, you are gonna lose the backbone of the, your aides, your, you know, the support staff. I have heard many of them say that if it, if they don't get not exactly what they want, but if it, if it doesn't go good for them, they're gonna be leaving, and I'm concerned for the students, because it's only gonna hurt the students. We work hard, we put our heart and soul into the students, and I feel that if that contract goes through, it's gonna hurt the students more than anybody. We deserve more than what we're getting. Like Judy said, the other districts are way above what we're getting, pay-wise, and I, I just worry about the students. I work with special needs students, and I, I have a special needs son, and my heart is in it. So I, I would truly worry if that goes through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the audience or public, or public comments? Okay, thank you, everyone, appreciate everyone's comments. Item eleven, information, eleven point oh one, district enrollment information, that is out for everyone to see. Item twelve, new business or discussion for potential new business items, board members?
Yes, I think a couple of weeks ago, I brought to the new business discussion an opportunity to review the policy, and we kind of chatted about it for a few minutes and then determined that it's best to maybe hear how the policy is implemented first, before you consider any changes. I can tell you I reviewed that policy more than once in the last few weeks, and there are some provisions, especially in particular at the high school level, that are just strictly very, very difficult, almost impossible to implement, the way the policy's written. So based on what we've discussed earlier about distraction of cellphones, I think it's an opportunity to really take another look at the policy, so I'm bringing that to the board for a consideration.
How far into that policy are we, the first school year?
Yeah, um, yeah, the, the second, I think twenty-three, maybe. I think I had it on my docket to review in February, as far as laying out opportune time for that discussion, if the board would like it sooner. Certainly that's up to you, we can, you know, move policies around. We were trying to go down the older ones first, as you can see, to get those caught up, and then revisit some of the other ones. So the timing for me was more like a February discussion, but that's up to you guys.
I'm happy with February, as long as I know that it's, it's coming, and February will be here before we know it.
That's right.
Santa Claus first. Other board members, thoughts or comments on that item? A February thereabouts timeframe, maybe the whole meeting agenda? Thanks.
Sounds good.
Other items?
I will not be here for the October twenty-eighth meeting, so we had a meeting at LIU, the Lincoln Intermediate Unit, last week. Currently, they have not had to hit the line of credit, which I did tell you guys about because of the state budget impasse, but Ms., Dr. Marchese told us that he was figuring about two weeks they had left until they were actually gonna have to utilize that. So since there seems to be no end in sight sooner rather than later, they will be utilizing that line of credit that they had to get with PNC Bank because of the budget impasse. The federal monies are there for them, they've been approved, but they can't get them because the state budget hasn't been passed. So there's a little bit of concern and frustration, as you guys have here, with that situation. One of the things that's gonna be new that they're working on is they are actually gonna have some of the students that are involved at the LIU start their own little coffee shop, that they're going to have out at the New Oxford place where people can come in, and they're learning, it's like a life skills type of situation, where they're, I think they do one like that here in the high school, is that accurate? So similar to what they're doing in the high school, but they're gonna be implementing that, I believe, next month, we're gonna be going, doing the ribbon cutting and things like that. There's also some other changes that are gonna be coming in the first of the year, some programs and things that they're offering. We got a presentation on the Lincoln Edge, as far as what they're doing with that and how they're using that to help their cyber and to help schools that have their own cyber program. So once we get a deeper presentation on that, I'll be able to bring that back, and I think Dr. Marchese, is he coming to do a presentation here at some point?
He is supposed to, in concert with the Franklin Learning Center and Chippensburg Potential. We're trying to coordinate that at the same meeting.
Yeah, so he had mentioned that he might be coming down this way, so you will all get an opportunity to, to meet him, and since he's been, it's about a year and change now since he's been in, a little less than a year, because he came in January, and he's a lot different than his predecessor, and he's really got things moving and shaking up there, and some people are liking it and some aren't, you know, it's kind of the way it goes, but I think, just like what we're doing here, he has a vision for the LIU, and he's really trying to get everybody on board with that. Transparent communication, as Mrs. Luffy said, is something he's doing really well, and he's got a buy-in from the stakeholders, so I'm excited about some of the presentations that they're gonna be giving us and the way that the LIU is moving in that direction. So I wanted to make sure I got that to you guys, since I won't be here next time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd just like to, I'd just like to comment that we've heard about professional development for our teachers, which is very necessary, and I support it one hundred percent. We had an, one board member who was interested in going to the PSBA state conference but did not transpire. I think we need to be considering a potential for the future for how we as board members can expand our professional development. I've been attempting to forward things that I have participated in, summaries types of things, but in talking to someone who does go to or has gone to the state conference with PSBA, it is apparently an extremely valuable resource, and in other districts, apparently they rotate board members going to that conference with an administrator or whatever, and I think we need to consider it. It certainly is not something that I am overly interested in participating myself, but I think it would be very, very valuable, and I appreciate the interest that Mike showed in possibly going, but it was kind of late in the time period, but between the required training that the state has in their act from whatever year it was, two thousand and twelve or something like that, you know, I think that there is a need for us to stay current on things that are going on beyond our district. So just a thought for the future.
That's great. I agree with Fay, and I appreciate Fay, the public might know this, but Fay does an excellent job at passing along things that she's learning to the whole team and keeps us resourced, so it's much appreciated.
Yeah.
Okay, before we adjourn, I am gonna ask the board members, we are gonna have to go back to executive session to, to resume our, our conversation on personnel matters, so it'll be a real brief executive session before we go home, watch the baseball game tonight, Mr. McKee. Meeting's adjourned, thank you.